Good evening, welcome to the Glen's Falls Common Council meeting. It is Tuesday, February 11th. It's 7:30 and time for our regular session. And tonight we have the Pledge of Allegiance. I've asked Councilwoman Gooden, who hasn't been with us for a little bit, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now open up the Common Council to the public comment. If anybody would like to address the council, please come to the microphone. Tell us your name and address, please.
I'm Sean Valdino, live at 32 Theater Bend. And I want to make a nice comment how I saw that you guys just recently started the construction of the new trail system on Ward 5 right next to the Hudson River. Great job, and I can't wait for the spring.
Great, thank you, Sean. And as part of our, to so you're aware, the waterfront redevelopment plan started under Mayor Diamond, and we're happy to be working on that. And then it will lead walkers along the Hudson River towards our new park or towards the revitalization of Hadlands Cove when it comes later. So that walking path should be finished this spring, as soon as we can get everything back up and running. Does anybody else have any public comment? Thank you. Just not seeing any, Pete, will you let us know if somebody comes on online and has a comment? Committee reports, Councilman Clark.
Yeah, I've been a little delayed in getting out an email to the members of the Finance Committee about a date, but it will be at the end of February. I just gotta, I gotta send that out to them. I just need to touch base with our control a little more time, and they'll get it out and get the agenda out.
Thank you, thank you. Committee reports, Councilman Donahue.
On sustainability, we'll get to the end of what we can do with it. I talked to Jeff, and he said, let's think about it and go from there. So he may have a merge, I don't know.
You'll let us know when there's progress on that contract.
He went back there, he said, I know a lot of where else we can do it. I said, alright.
I'm not sure exactly what you mean. There's a number of things going on in sustainability.
He meant you.
Well, you start out with the lights, you know, the LED lights.
Yeah.
And then there's tons of stuff after that, so.
Let me, I'll have a conversation with you later.
Yeah, yeah, just, you know, because I, you know, Jeff, I said, he said, we're not going to make this meeting. And he wanted to think about what was going to happen, previous meetings going on in the last. Plus, I think we have a ton of work involved.
Well, we'll have something on the agenda shortly.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports, Councilman Landry.
Thank you, Eric. Personnel and Labor Committee continue to meet regularly with representatives in the health insurance industry as we take on an early fact-finding mission to determine our course of action regarding employee health insurance for 2026.
Thank you. Committee reports, Councilwoman Gooden.
Yes, we don't have a meeting scheduled as of yet, but we're looking to schedule our special projects to be part by the end of the month.
Great, thank you. Committee reports, Councilman Lap.
I've got two. Councilmember Palmer is away today, so Mary's got this very comfortable posture. Just to people at home, she has no legroom over here. Anyhow, it's kind of a cruel design, but anyway.
I did it for eight years, so.
Oh, you were over there, that's right. I forgot you were over there, Councilman Clark. Go ahead.
So Building and Codes Committee met last week, I think it was Wednesday. I imagine it was Wednesday. And discussed different things about firefight or fire inspections for multiple units. And discussed some other things that we've just heard about short-term rentals. So if we want to do something as a city about putting a fee on for short-term rentals, we have to do that before the state law goes into effect. But the consensus was, we were mostly concerned about making sure we had safety things covered, and those are driven by what the cost is to the city and not any additional fee and aren't really in play for that. But if anybody has some strong feelings on that, just reach out to anybody on the committee or anybody in Building and Codes to just let them know. Aside from that, the, I'm looking for my notes, which I have scattered about.
Okay, yes, here it is.
The Technology Committee met, and I have some updates for everybody from that. One thing is that New York State has recently required government entities to be under a domain of .gov. And we, in our position, our website's under cityofglenssfalls.com. And .com is usually for commercial entities, not for government entities. So we do have some time to get this together, and we've reached out to Star Tech, who does our IT stuff, and we're working with them to get those things in line. We're also looking for MFA, multi-factor authentication for the city, for people who are doing work for the city remotely. Right now, we're not doing multi-factor authentication. So we're just going through the process of what it takes to make sure that anybody who requires that kind of access to be on our networks will be able to, because it's best practice. And we have a training proposal that's working through and looking at department heads and then also people at Common Council who are interested in getting some training on Microsoft 365 products. We also have some other items about cybersecurity that are in process. And we have some things with C-Click Fix. Some of these things are already available on the website, but the full rollout is not available because we kind of want to just make sure that we don't put ourselves in a position that Albany has been in with having some things available that they don't have the code to really support. And we're just trying to figure out the legal implications of that before we roll this out and open up to the public exactly those things. So that's it for committee reports.
Thank you. Under voice vote, we have two resolutions. One is a resolution to approve the minutes of January 28th, 2025, regular meeting in Glen's Falls Common Council. Two is a resolution to approve the clerk's monthly PVB report. Do we have a motion?
So, second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Under roll call vote, are there any items that the council would like to pull? Not here then? Three is a resolution to decrease revenue code at A116852030, computer hardware by $5,925, and increase A23120-2030 computer by $5,925 for police department network upgrades. This is from the 2024 budget, is attached. Twenty-four is a resolution to decrease revenue code A11210-1000 personnel and increase by $1,000, and increase A564104479 other contracted services by $1,000 to pay for an advertisement. The city placed in the 2024 Adronic Balloon Festival printing program from this. This also is from the 2024 budget. Five is a resolution authorizing the city of Glen's Falls Community Development manual payments in the amount of $18,756.92 to pay for a required legal ad regarding the environmental approval process for NYSCHCR Home Grant and to reimburse not-for-profits for approved expenses as agreed to for the project year 2024. Six is a resolution to decrease revenue code A11999-990-9000 contingency by $454.19 and increase A11670-4327 Central MAD by $454.19 to pay Pittney Bow's invoice, as attached. Seven is a resolution to set a public hearing for proposed local law number to be determined-2025, February 25th, 2025, 7/25, to amend Chapter 220-40 zoning to change the permit process for short-term rentals based upon the recommendations of the Building and Codes Committee and authorize the city clerk to post notice for the public hearing. Eight, a resolve that the Common Council hereby retroactively approves an encroachment permits number 85-2024, 4-2025, and 5-2025. As attached. Nine is a resolution to approve the mobile food unit permit number 1, 2025, retroactively approved by Mayor Collins on January 23rd for Jack's, the last DBA Jack's Coaches Corner in 119 Hatchery Road, Gansford, New York, to vend on city property on a weekly basis from January 3rd, 2025 through December 31st, 2025. Ten is a resolution to approve the warrant. Do we have a motion for a roll call vote?
Some moves.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Lard Clark.
Yes.
Councilman Donahue.
Yes.
Councilman Landry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Corbin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lap.
Yes. Thank you. Old business, Councilman Clark, old business.
Yeah, I just want to thank our DPW for the great job they did with our streets this first real significant snowstorm that we had. And I'd probably take a little bit of Councilman Landry's thunder away, but please show me your sidewalks and fire hydrants. So, thank you.
Ray, if you're gonna, if you're gonna take us thunder away, you also have to say the storm.
Oh, yes. Thank you for that.
At least, no, maybe I don't. Old business, Councilman Donahue.
Councilman Landry. Thank you, Eric. We spend a lot of time working to make our downtown clean and safe and friendly. We try to address ice storms as they occur. A large tree is tined down in the open lawn area at the corner of Bay and Glen Street across from Maple Street since well before Christmas. I would love, as would a lot of downtown merchants, see this cleaned up. It's on private property, but I was curious, is there any code, maybe the city attorney can tell us that, that can be applied to this situation to get it cleaned up?
It would have to be a violation in order to Building and Codes. They could investigate.
Then they could.
All right, thank you. But long before that, let me call the property manager and see what his plans are.
Even better, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, Councilwoman Gooden, old business.
No, business.
Councilman Lap, old business, sir.
Just to follow up on Glen's Falls, knowing we've gotten, everybody on the council and the mayor also has gotten a lot of emails about, from constituents. And I know that Buildings and Codes has already reached out and said that we're looking to enforce the site plan on the particular property. I just wanted to, you know, get that in the record, that we're doing something with it. We're not just standing still. And I also want to just say with the problem properties at the last Buildings and Codes meeting that, and I could have, but this is in the Building and Codes report, that we got an update from our Building and Codes Department that 56 Walma and 26 Leonard, there were certain things that were being followed up and going through the process with, they're not just standing still. And I just wanted to let everybody know that, that you have something.
Yeah, that's not new. The guy could go in and take stuff out, and that was.
Yeah.
We could, so, no children go in the house.
Yeah.
And that's the last I knew.
Yeah.
He could go in, take stuff out of there, and that's it. But he couldn't be there, none of it.
He can only be there between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. No children are allowed, no third parties may be present unless he's also there, and he's there strictly for cleaning purposes. Police have increased patrols in the evening to make sure no one is living there because the building has been closed. We go back to court and march for a declaration of delinquency hearing in front of Judge Hobbs.
Thank you, attorney.
Thank you. Okay, so, new business, Councilman Clark. I have no. Councilman Donahue. No new business? No. New business, Councilman Landry.
Absolutely. This Friday, February 14th, the City of Glen's Falls school system will be retiring the jersey of our beloved Joe Gerard III, veteran of SJP3. Let's help make that event be another one that they talk about for years to come. Let's crowd the gymnasium at the high school on Friday night and honor the man who helped put Glen's Falls on the map around the world. To the citizens of Glen's Falls, we need your help. Our firefighters need your help in getting fire hydrants shuttled. I always harp on that, and I recently took a ride around the second ward, and boy, there's a lot of them that were buried. So if you want to have and assist the fire department, you want to have good response if you have an incident in your neighborhood, lend a hand if you wouldn't get out and shovel those fire hydrants out. And thanks to Councilman, or Councilman Lard Clark for mentioning that as well. I also would like to congratulate the DPW for another great job. One of the things that I think is great that the DPW does during the snowstorm is, is that by the time our kids are walking to school and by the time people are commuting to work, the main highways and a lot of the smaller side streets are taken care of. So it's a good job that they do. There's always good news, it's always nice to have good news, especially about this Cool Insurance Arena. I saw some statistics the other day I found interesting. As of February 1st, 2025, the Thunder have hosted 21 games this season. Ten of those were sold out, that's half of them. We're averaging 4,500 people per game. The Cool Arena is alive and a very well and very important part of our overall downtown offerings. If you've amended the Cool Insurance Arena lately, I suggest that you do and enjoy the great events that they have there. Thank you.
Thank you. New business, Councilwoman Gooden.
No, no business.
Councilman Lap, new business.
Yeah, I had something a minute ago and I lost it, so I'm just gonna skip it.
Thank you. Under new business, I wanted to mention our access to Home Grant that has been, the applications are now available for people of low and moderate income and seniors who might have a problem with accessibility in their home. It provides money to help with ramps, with widening of doors, the redoing of fixtures, maybe showers, things like that, that help people with mobility issues. This is part of our Homes and Community Renewal, HCR. Just one more grant that we're getting from HCR.
Mayor, I just have a question on that.
Sure.
Do we have like an inventory of many of these places that have been retrofitted that we could share with different agencies? Because I lived in an apartment, oh boy, like 19, early 1990s, and it had been retrofitted for somebody in a wheelchair. And it was, for somebody who's six foot five, like a pretty ironic place to live in. But I could imagine if I was in a wheelchair, I would really like to know that there was some sort of inventory of these places that, you know, we reach out, we do these things, you know, to fit for one person. We should probably follow up on that so that we know where those places are.
Yeah.
And then we could share that with the different agencies around the city.
Great idea. I don't believe, we've never gotten this grant before, it's the first one of this one. So we definitely will have a record of who we help. But I also, I doubt there is one, but I think it's a great idea and we should create one. I don't believe, you know, in the three years that I've been in office, as we've gotten our community and economic development growing, it's apparent to me that we don't have good inventories and databases of a lot of things, like businesses, right? It's only through, to get a full updated list of, say, restaurants in Glen's Falls, I went to the Business Improvement District, and they had one because of the taxing district and that they had that data. But we didn't. So we are utilizing, collecting, it's a great, great thing to do, and I'll pass it along. We certainly should record that and let it be in there. Remember, also, things like in Building and Codes, we have had homes that were, over the years.
We also haven't even been collecting it in a database that we could share information.
No, not at all. So we're in agreement, and I think those would be, maybe you and the Technology Committee could start to look at our future and that kind of thing. Because, boy, we don't even have a good database of how to contact people other than send them their taxes, right? I mean, we don't have a way like a university would of emailing people or, excuse me, phone. Phone, so all of that is stuff that we could work towards. And now that we're invested so much of that ARPA money in our technology, I think it's actually feasible, maybe for the first time, that, great idea. And then the electrical update, I wanted you to know that this past week, the first week in February, the electrical switch gearbox was delivered. We went on to generate power like we needed to. It went smoothly as all got out. They were there Monday through Thursday, they were gone Friday morning. We are back up, we have an operating system that when we need to switch from the three line to the eight line, we can, it's great. We're still working with the insurance company to see what they will pay for or not, right? Whether that claim goes through. We were able to make the original deposit of $300,000 from the 2024 water sewer budget, which was under budget. So that was good, it's not great, right? We want to do the rest of it, but good news so far. The gear has been replaced, it's up and running as well as we could expect. I think yesterday, the generators were due to go back to the places we rented them from, and we'll now wait for the bills to come in and the insurance claim to see financially where we are. And so I wanted to give you that update. And then finally, I've got a resolution from the floor that I'm very happy to present to you. Let me read it first, and then, so this would be a rare floor vote for the city council. And so I know I gave it to you all in copy, and I'm gonna read the entire resolution, the backup documents, the memorandum of understanding is there for your records, but we won't read it into the record. A resolution approving the memorandum of agreement between the City of Glen's Falls and Glen's Falls Firefighters Union Local 2230 IAAF-FLCIO and authorizing the City of Glen's Falls to enter into the same. Whereas a memorandum of agreement has been negotiated and finalized between the City of Glen's Falls and the Firefighters Union Local 22230, excuse me, addressing the donation of earned accruals from fighter union members to Lieutenant Douglas Hall. And whereas the terms and conditions of this MOA have been reviewed and deemed acceptable by both parties, and whereas the Common Council recognizes the importance of maintaining harmonious relations with the union and ensuring compliance with the agreed upon terms of the MOA for the benefit of all parties involved. Now therefore be resolved by the City of Glen's Falls Common Council in a regular session assembled that, one, memorandum of agreement between the City of Glen's Falls and Glen's Falls Firefighters Union Local 2230 is hereby accepted and its contents are fully approved. Two, the mayor of the City of Glen's Falls is hereby authorized to sign and execute the MOA on behalf of the city and subject to any necessary modifications or revisions as deemed appropriate. Three, relevant departments and officials are instructed to implement the provisions of the MOA and ensure compliance with its terms. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution along with the signed MOA shall be provided to all relevant departments and parties for their information and appropriate action. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its approval, approved this day. I believe it's going to be approved this day, the 11th of February, 2025. This is a roll call vote from the floor. Karen, can you remind us what that means?
Yes, it must be unanimous. If anyone abstains, his count doesn't know, the motion would fail.
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a moment to speak to this?
Yeah.
I'll take my second.
Certainly. So Councilman Clark comments. Any public comment?
I'm glad we finally came to a resolution.
Councilman Donahue, any public comment?
No, we need to get this done.
Great.
Today.
Councilman Landry.
Thank you. I'd like to read a prepared statement, and I'd like to direct this to Lieutenant Hall. Lieutenant Hall, the alarm has sounded. Your fellow firefighters have responded. Your union brothers have responded. Your chief has responded. Your mayor has responded, and the Common Council here in the City of Glen's Falls has responded as well. The request before us all was how can we assist one of our very best firefighters and line officers in a time of his need? The request was very unique. It took many meetings and discussions over an extended period of time to get where we are tonight. From my own professional experiences, I find that quite normal in a situation such as this. The firefighters did their job, the mayor did his job, and now the Common Council is ready and willing to do their job. There is only one winner in this effort, and that is Lieutenant Hall and his family. And the city did its job in acting in good faith when it comes to spending money that is not ours but belongs to our taxpayers. We did that by not spending any unnecessary tax dollars. It was a long road for sure, but a very necessary one. Lieutenant Hall, on behalf of myself and all my constituents, we salute you, sir. We thank you for your service you provided our residents over some 17 years. We all sleep better every night knowing that you and your fellow firefighters were always ready to respond to our needs, and now it's time for us to respond to yours. Rest assured that we will never forget who you are in our City of Glen's Falls family. Your fellow firefighters cannot say enough things about our professionalism, your dedication, and your commitment to protecting the citizens of Glen's Falls. My very best wishes to you, Lieutenant Hall, and thank you to everyone who made this happen. I'd also like to read, this afternoon I received an email from Councilwoman Palmer, which she asked me to read into the record this evening, and I will do that now. "Colleagues and community members, I regret that I cannot be there in person tonight as I am attending a previously scheduled..." as I am attending a previously scheduled conference on community colleges in Washington, DC. However, I want to take a moment to acknowledge everyone impacted by this process, the Hall family, the firefighters union, the council, and all who care deeply about this issue. This process took far too long and it should have placed an unnecessary burden on many. However, I firmly believe that when we bring people to the table, share facts openly, engage in respectful, solution-focused dialogue, real progress happens. That is proven when Councilman Landry, the firefighters union, and I sat down in good faith as part of the Labor Management Committee. In just two meetings, we came remarkably close to an agreement, needing only final legal signing. This is what negotiation should look like, and I deeply appreciate the firefighters union and Councilman Landry for their commitment to working towards a resolution. I hope that in the future when situations arise that require negotiation, we can engage directly from the start. Doing so will save time, prevent unnecessary hardship, and ensure that we reach solutions efficiently and collaboratively. I encourage my colleagues on the council to approve this measure tonight, and I have faith that you will. Sincerely, Councilwoman Diane Palmer, third ward, City of Glens Falls." Thank you.
Thank you. Roll. Um, comment, Councilwoman Gooden?
Uh, yes, I also just prepared a little statement. I am proud of what the mayor, the common council, and the union leaders have been able to accomplish in making sure that Lieutenant Hall can reach retirement and the taxpayers of the city are protected. It is in the true spirit of cooperation and concern for each other that makes Glens Falls special. We thank you, Lieutenant Hall, for your service. It has not gone unnoticed, and we are so happy tonight that we are finally able to come to an agreement and, and support you and your family in this endeavor. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your, thank you. Council, Councilman.
I just want to go back on a couple of things here. Just walk back, two weeks ago, even less than two weeks ago, there was a statement put out that the common council had made a decision. I asked that the, the, uh, the, uh, what is it, Director of Communications for the city retract that. Never was retracted. The council had never made a decision. Tonight is the first time the council will make a decision. Councilmember Landry said this is a normal process. I don't think it's a normal process. This has gone on for over a year. It should not have gone on so long. I am a member of the union, I pay union dues. I do not feel like this has been, up to this last week, a process that was done in good faith. I have very, I have, I have problems with how executive session was used and that we were forbidden for speaking on certain items, that there was polling for votes during executive session. And I am looking forward to being able to vote for this now. I regret for the community that the council has been not allowed to speak about it and that there's so many rumors that have gone around about this. And I hope we can do better going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I am proud to be able to bring this resolution to a floor vote. This is a memorandum of understanding that is fair and equitable in agreement. An agreement where the numbers add up and has gained the legal approval from our attorneys on both sides. Most importantly, it does justice to our Lieutenant Hall and service our city. It has been a demanding process, but our oath commits us to act within the bounds of the law as we safeguard the interest of our city. And this situation called for the greatest possible care. I thank everyone involved, our personnel director, city's legal counsel, and the union leadership for their counsel and their diligent work over the months that it took us to get to this point. I'll now take a motion for a roll call vote.
Sub move.
Do we have a second, second? Roll call vote, please.
Councilor Darno.
Yes.
Councilor Landry.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gooden.
Yes.
And Councilman Lappam.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Public comment, anybody who'd like to address the council, please come to, come to the floor.
PJ Callahan, Glens Falls Firefighters Union President. I just wanted to briefly come up and say thank you. I want to thank the mayor for bringing this to the table tonight and getting us here. I want to thank Councilman Clark, Councilman Darno, Councilman Landry, Councilman Gooden, Councilman Lappam, for all voting yes on this. We appreciate it, we really do. On behalf of the whole union, I just wanted to come up in person and say thank you for getting this done tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there are no further public comment, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
All in favor? I stand adjourned. Thank you all.